Back in public sessions, I'll never tell me your set will continue on.
Yeah, I'm all set.
Recording in progress. Can you make the motion to seal the minutes?
Oh, thank you for letting me. Yes, I'll make the motion if we seal the minutes for our executive session. All those in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Ken. Alright, can I help this guy?
Um, yep, go ahead.
Chief of Motion.
Thank you. So starting from the top of my summary, two hundred and seven emergency incidents to date. Not working since the last time we met, we were in Franklin, uh, two last week. Uh, they broke a couple of acres up there and they called us to help, so we spent like three hours in Franklin. Uh, yesterday, a brush fire at Hackleboro and Foster Road in one of the fields there, burnt a barn acre. Um, yesterday afternoon, so we had a good response, we stopped it, it was spreading pretty quick. Uh, and we've been on the interstate and 106 multiple times in the last month for serious accidents. Can't break here, we staffed that with EMS crew, we were three, we were two medicals at the fair, uh, slash roadways. And, uh, we actually had a part of a fire over at the fair, so right on top of the hill there, so ended up.
Plus the car thing at the beginning before the fair was started.
Yeah, 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 so, well, it's been, thankful that I have a bunch of, bunch of members there, including myself. Five provincial weeks coming up in October, we're in a planning stage now to do our annual demo for the, all the children at the elementary school. That always goes very long. Um, and then the annual inspection is being scheduled also for the ele- to the elementary school by sick law and has to be performed by November first of every year. So, work with them on that. Did the same thing at the whole child center last, uh, two weeks ago, and their annual inspection is done. And at Hillstruck Farm, which is the name of the proposed condominium complex on West Road.
Yep, West Road.
Uh, West Road, um, so a consultant for the developer reached out to me, um, and gave me, shared with me plans and all that stuff. And so this, the disco data indicated what the impact's gonna be on the fire economy. If X amount of buildings are built, X amount of people are moved in. So based upon that disco data, it's gonna add four calls a year, uh, according to his calculations.
Four calls?
Four, yeah, so which is five percent, so, you know, based upon disco data, we can, we can absorb that. And, um, he, um, we just asked, would, if it goes forward, we don't see anything else. And, and obviously I put my plug in for fire, fire, uh, fire suppression, uh, fire suppression system and/or system, I love to see that. And waters have premium down there, waters have premium everywhere, right? So, but, you know, waters are premium, especially in new development, and I love to see that. He took those notes down and he said, "Thank you for your time," so.
Do you agree with that, that that kind of development, like thirty-five housing units would only be four calls a year?
So what they did is if they took data from other towns and they, they're like in London, they built that same company built like three hundred homes. How many emergency calls, fire, any EMS, and they came out with a factor, right? And based upon that factor, how many calls we do a year, they multiplied it and that's what it came out to. Um, I actually, we hold this home here, um, one second. Yeah, estimated annual fire calls, like in, uh, Milford, Penrose, Penandary, uh, single, uh, multiples, uh, point oh three nine calls per unit. Uh, for fire and point oh six one for medical, you know, that times our factor, it equals two fire, two medical calls additional per year for that complex.
Okay.
So, I'm going off his data, so I made sure I put that, the data in front of me, um, it's, you know, four calls per year of the fire. And it's gonna have a minimal work back, and they have to explain to the department, well, we do all the staff and all that stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, one sec, when does fire prevention need, please?
I have it on my calendar. October.
Oh, that's October.
Yeah, yeah, in October, yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll give it to you before you, um, before done, then, so.
Thanks.
Okay, membership, my application, um, that I'm reviewing, and we're still seeking new members. If anybody wants to start their account in any capacity, uh, reach out to me. The High Road Hydrant Project is, uh, standstill, we're still working with DES, um, I expect it to be completed by now. DES has, um, um, they denied our application, so we're working with somebody that, that. Looking to hire somebody out of my budget that, that basically navigates the relaxes of DES as far as these things go, so, um, so I'm working on that. The Motor Speedway event is the week of the nineteen, twenty, and twenty-first, we are staffing all three days with one fire truck and, and three personnel. We're in a hurry to be out at a planning meeting last week with NASCAR people, I'm going there tonight for six-thirty. Doing a walkthrough of the, the entire facility and as far, we're looking at it from an emergency response perspective. Because, you know, once the event is on, you can't move, you can't move a vehicle, you can't move persons, somehow we're staging people and all that, that's what we're doing, right? Pond Beach has been pretty active over, over the, over the summer, as you know, we had a drawing that, um, I believe it was, uh, Seawall Falls that conquered yesterday. Also got that fire away, but we can, we do water them. Our foam system on the Ford Street kind of needs to be replaced, so I'm working, uh, with a render to get that done now. I attach, and the, uh, so E91, occasionally I get people calling asking about addresses and all that stuff. And so this is standard in the state, it's, it's about sixty pages long, that, that talks about addressing. I wrote that down to a one pager and I gave it to you, it's on our website and it's being, I set a queue for the newsletter for September. Uh, it's basically, it simplifies everything in time what we're looking for, because there's, whether it's on purpose or just not paying attention, there's a lot of homes in town that don't have, you know, we take, we delay getting there because we can't see the address. Uh, especially at night, so, there's the standard, um, I know it's covered by RLSA, but we're not out enforcing and kind of making people do anything. This is for information for people that, you know, help us, help you, if we can't find you, we can't help you.
Did you send me everything with the pictures too?
Yes, I sent you the document right here.
Perfect, thank you.
And it's also on our webpage, if somebody ever asks you, go to fire on our webpage, Cal for that first thing, okay?
Okay, thanks.
So if there's gonna be any attempt to enforce this, um, we really just don't have the time, you know what I mean?
I, I, I think, I'm, I'm taking the education route, because we don't have the staffing time to kind of knock on doors and enforce, enforce it, so. We go on a call, we don't see the address, we pay, you know, once everything is done, we recommend to them, and they usually comply. I've had one person tell me, well, we don't really want anybody to know that we're here, so they never mail one.
Okay.
Okay, not quite much they could do about that, so.
Gonna make us hard to help you then?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So a new engine update, we're about a year out, I'm heading to Massachusetts next week to meet with the president and, uh, um, in the order of the company that's basically. That, that's building our fire truck, I, I do that annually, they open a house, and I, I've known them for twenty-five, thirty years and basically even the order, I've got them on myself, they never give you a problem, you know what I mean? So it's kind of like, I, I wanna keep that relationship going. So just so you know, they're kind of like, like, you know, the, the, the bank should, the banks, you know, Chevrolet, you know? So they're the, they're Greenwood Fire Apparatus, but Chevys are made in Detroit, right? So, like, our fire trucks being made in Florida, okay, but these guys are the local deal. And so that's what, and that's what we deal with for everything, so I'm holding on there, actually in, uh, in September, uh, for that, I try to get there once a year. For the new update, um, I had talked into the chief of, uh, Ware, they just ordered a new fire truck, they didn't go with what we got, but, uh. So the fire truck we purchased, three years, supposed to eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and we, um, we ended up paying eight hundred for it, but, uh, in a three-year delivery. As of today's numbers, the new, that same engine is one point one million and five years old.
It's crazy.
Yeah.
It's really nice.
It's just absolutely.
Timing being, everything, our timing was good.
Yeah, 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 it was good.
Wow.
When's the next replacement up, six years?
What's that?
The next slated?
After, we're in pretty good shape after this one, we really are, yeah, yeah, we're in pretty good shape, so.
Okay.
Uh, in the HPHC system, we've been wrestling with that for a couple of weeks and thanks to the help of Ken and, uh, the technicians came in and, and got things going. And they gave us some suggestions, a week to do it for some PM to it, so that's on our calendar and we're gonna help, you know, get that done, get that, make sure that gets on the record.
I saw all your lovely filters, Herb gave me a tour of the filters, so, thank you for taking care of those.
Well, shame on me, I sure got my before that, but, that was the, that was the root cause of the issue.
No, no, but, I mean, that's just maintenance, that is, is what it's all, it'd be the breed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions?
We'll do that a little later on, some of these.
Thought I saw that on the, uh.
And it's just, uh, the work that was done and then, uh, an estimate for some more work that will pose with the problem.
So, yeah, sounds good.
Perfect, thank you.
Any questions?
Nope.
No, just say.
Thanks, Chief.
No questions, just thank yous.
You have a meeting at six?
I do, yes.
That's where I'm trying to go, is who needs to be out of here first?
Why don't you go first?
Okay, alright now, Sam?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unpaid receivables, page one and two, and then the ledger sheet for collection summary year-to-date. Shows you the balances that we collected and what the end balances as of today. So the four point four million dollars committed, we've got a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars left to collect. There was outstanding land use change tax, and that was cleaned up yesterday, so that's good.
And further communication, did you, there's not too many with people?
Not that I'm aware of, and we haven't seen any money from that one, so. They've not sent us any sort of payment, and they haven't sent anything explaining why, so.
And Lovering, how will we ever figure that out?
Eventually, we're gonna have to start talking about that in earnest, yeah.
Indeed. So, and. And when do we talk about, um, under twenty-twenty-three, the third meeting?
Um, anytime.
Anytime?
Cause she needs to be back, so.
Haven't had that conversation, when is the best?
That's, that's the year best.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's why I'm looking at you, and you, and you.
We just get it on the agenda?
Yeah, I mean, there's, the main, right, main's done, so, we'll be talking to Deanie about it next.
Next spring.
Next spring, yeah. But if you're gonna have communications with any of the property owners, then certainly open to that.
Is that what you're thinking?
Well, I'm thinking, yeah, just before we get down to the very last meeting, but I don't know what, if there's any time that's better than any other, I don't, in the scheme of things. Before the holidays, I don't know, middle of winter, but.
If you're gonna tackle Lovering, you probably should tackle Simberry too.
Yeah.
Or, in that order.
Yes.
Cause I think Lovering's gonna be a bigger problem than Simberry, who's a person who's here, who has family, and it's a house, and.
Yeah.
You know, they both pose challenges, but.
When do you think would be a good time to get those on the schedule to, to move along?
I don't think we could do it, uh, Rob, how about the next time you're here? What do you think?
Yeah, I think, I think, I, I wouldn't suggest waiting too much longer, because it's gonna be the budget, this type of budget stuff. So, probably the September, last week or something.
Yeah, let's, let's do it then.
Alright. Last week or September.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
Cool, thanks.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And this'll, otherwise, everything seems kind of.
Yeah.
Normal to you?
Yes.
Yay.
How many play orders? I don't know, are you even aware of that?
Uh.
Cause I know some happen order.
That's good, that's another whole conversation.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, they're slowly hanging out.
Yeah, they will.
Yeah. We shall see.
Yes, we will.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Come on, my friend.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So here we are, good evening.
Good evening.
Here we go. Um, yes, I do have a meeting at six o'clock in the agenda, because, um, the board of trustees does not meet in July. So, um, a couple of things to, to pull out of that, um, agenda, I share with you. Um, I have written the agenda in what I'd like, excuse me, the budget, because I write my budget throughout the year. Um, I think probably the best approach is if Beth and Ken and I can get together again for one of our, uh, meetings. And I could, uh, present my thought process on that. Um, and then probably, uh, Rick Crawford is my current chairman from Board of Trustees. Um, and so I would have him accompany me on that, so maybe Ken, I could schedule that with you by email and Beth.
Yes.
Um, and probably I would do that mid-September, with that timing worked for you. Um.
Yeah, we are meeting with the Budget Committee, the first meeting in September. If you know of any large proposals that may be coming, it might be a good idea just to.
Yeah, nothing large other than my heat system, and that would be my.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, I'm just, you know, it's nice to give the Budget Committee kind of a heads up on, on a big.
Absolutely.
Potential big item, big items.
So labor day's the first, so either the, when can, is that eight, September?
Eighth is when we're meeting.
No, 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 when could we be if we wanna meet before then? Either that first.
Next week?
Yes, we could do it next week.
Yeah, I'm free next week anytime, that means you.
Yes.
Just be a day at a time.
Okay, let, look, uh, we're scheduled to see what I can.
I mean, even if, I mean, I'm usually in on Monday anyway, Monday the twenty-fifth, if we, on the morning, if you wanted to.
Monday's the twenty-fifth, yeah. Let's start there.
August, right?
August.
August.
August twenty, right, yeah.
Thank you.
On the September. Okay, good, so I will email both of you on that.
Okay.
I'll just check the, the schedule, because we are so busy and fairly short-staffed, that sometimes I can't get away from the desk. So, let's go, we can try this until, otherwise, okay. Um, so August is the time that I circle, I cycle the team through vacations. Um, all of us are carrying a lot of vacations, um, time, just because we're busy under, under staff library. Um, but it's also a time that we can do redesign and, um, go through our collection inventory. Um, and we redesigned the children's room and the shaker room, so anytime you're fine, I'd love to give you a little tour.
Since I was in there, like, last week, if you was on there, I'd give you a little bit.
Oh, fun, yes.
Okay.
Um, so it's fun, you know, August is a time, it, it is our lowest patronage month, so we're probably having about a hundred, having ten people per day, which sounds like a lot. Um, and it's a lot for a lot of other libraries, but for us, that's kind of quiet. And it gives us time to figure out, like, does this work here, does that work here? So, um, library work is a lot, like merchandising, because if you move books, or you need books, or clean books, um, people are listening that they hadn't noticed before, so. Um, and as you're well aware, I am going to experience an expansion of my libraries of things, um, with some, some money, um, brought forth from Trustees and Trust Fund. And part of our redesign is to find room that we can store those things. Um, some of the, you receive that document, metal detectors, popcorn machine, ten-by-twenty-ten, um, things that.
Baby chair.
Baby chair, things that we already lent out, and that gives me the great, um, it kind of gives me a little room in my equipment line budget. Because if I buy things from the library, I can lend them, right? So, not, it used to be that you have a ten-by-ten tent, and you would use it just for programs, and now the rest of the time, it would just stay in the supply closet. Now, all of those things, all of our inventory can be lent, and I can use it as a circulation number, um, for my state environmental report. So, when the Friends of Canterbury Center are, I'd say, in the twenty-ten, um, I checked that out in that acts as a non-book material. So, it's kind of a no-brainer, um, most libraries in the state of New Hampshire have a library of things, our garden has always been storage, and it continues to be storage.
Sure.
Um, but we're just moving from the popcorn machine and the shaker room, that's complicated, um, because libraries have to transform, it's the apartment. Um, and more people are interested, it's not that we can buy things in this economy, um, some people are to try things out before they purchase it. So, uh, we're excited about that expansion.
Rachel, there are some things that can be stored, like, you know, with the farmer's market, we have that little trailer, it's outside, and the stuff that's, it doesn't hurt to be stored like that? Or is that more of a pain than it's helpful?
I think our next step, I don't have anything that large yet, that's definitely the next step. Um, like snowshoes, skis, post hole diapers, broder stickers, lawn mowers, a lot of libraries have that. It's hard, because everything has to be stored on library, library property, because we have policy and procedure.
Right.
And, um, I'm sure maybe some of you have heard more of the Cal Library, it was just vandalized last week. Um, so there's, you know, a great amount of, we're just trying to be extra careful.
Okay.
And it's stored, but I would love that, and, and maybe a pavilion or something with storage space, but that's another subject. Um. Okay, so, in terms of the heating grant, um, Ken and Beth and I spoke about this, um, when we last we spoke, um, I had a fifteen thousand dollar, um, heating grant. I had wanted to go geothermal. The price without a federal subsidy and tax break is making geothermal look a little lack of reach for me. And I'm talking in broad terms, because I have to be broad terms right now. If we do an air pump, a geothermal, like an air exchange or an air heat pump, it's more manageable in terms of price. Um, because the geothermal is a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, and my fifteen thousand dollars isn't going, couldn't go very far. There's a seventy-eight thousand dollar federal heating subsidy, that's very much a question. So I've been talking, and that's, none of my doing, certainly that's the federal government. And I don't wanna sign a contract for a piece of equipment that is gonna rely heavily on a federal subsidy that just is not going to happen. Um, libraries have to learn to the hard way, that our funding can just be eliminated from us, so it's kind of a trigger thing for me. So, an intux of ultra-geothermal, um, tried to gauge through their suppliers and their know-how, how certain they are that if I can get the geothermal, um, installed within next year, um, would that potentially still be there? So I'm weighing all of that. Um. Rob and Kerry Hunter, um, have taken over, um, the stewardship of the Rita Brasky Memorial Garden. That had previously been Demita Fisher with the help of Hamish Merk, um, but, um, Demita wanted to pass that on. And Rob and Kerry Hunter are master gardeners, um, and they, um, are willing to take over the garden space. Just to give you a little historical information about that, um, the garden has always been the responsibility of the library. And in my twenty years there, probably we've had about seventeen or eighteen different groups of people that said that they would do the library garden, historically it lasted for a year and then they get tired and wanted their own garden. Um, cause it's large, right? I've got this, I've got a lot of, um, but, um, I am happy to say that really kind of stopped with Demita, she really took it over and took it on and did a beautiful job. Um, and she's our, our most senior, she spent her most tenure doing it. Um, I, no hesitation, and Rob and Kerry did a really good job. Um, it is a, um, pollinator garden, um, and it's a licensed pollinator garden or certified pollinator garden, so, um, if you see them out there, um, we're just really lucky. Because if they're not doing it, I am. Um, and the great Gordon Jackson, well, that I remember. Um, has been working to eradicate the poison ivy on the back hill, which is all, it just grows back and it's mushy and steep. Um, and he, bless your career, he's been working to take care of that. Um, and again, this is just the Gordon show, like, he's back there working tirelessly with heavy clothing and office heat. And, um, so if you see him, uh, he's giving your thanks as, as in my other trustees and staff.
Thanks in the popsicle.
Absolutely, exactly.
Bert, is he pulling it, Rachel, is that?
I believe he's pulling some, most of it he's pulling.
Wow.
It's a lot of work?
It is a lot of work. And he, if you know Gordon, he takes long shifts, um, so he's back there with my garden. And there's a lot of it back there, and it just grows and grows and grows. But that also benefits our farmer's market partners, uh, and we do outdoor programming back there, and it's a really hard.
And do you still have the little trail, wasn't there a little trail there? And was that all poison ivy as well?
Not as bad, just the beginning of it, but we do have a major trail, because starting in October, we're doing rain, shine, clear, snow, outdoor story hour. Um, in addition to our regular Tuesday, Thursday children's programming, um, it's a rain or shine, and then outdoor, um, classroom. But we don't have classrooms, so, you know, just be outside in the snow week. Getting kids outside. So, sorry to be so vague about, um, the heating system, I am working on it, I just am trying to make the most prudent decision, um, based on the tumultuous, um, grant situation.
That's all any of us can do.
Right.
Or any, and grant people can, people who rely on grants.
Right. Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Where are my cohorts? Highway and Chris? Oh. Oh, there's my cohort, thank you.
Good day. Alright.
So, uh, John did not have anything for Highway, that's why he's not here.
Yeah.
Um, they're done all the dark road work, except for regular maintenance, and they're.
All the arpter?
Pardon me?
All the arpter?
Correct.
That's all done?
That's all done.
Um, so they didn't water any of that in, right? Does the water truck sound?
The water truck is broken.
Again?
Again. The valves are all busted, John will be most likely asking for a slide-in water tank, go to two thousand twenty-six, fully pumped trucks.
Cause have you driven the roads they did with the arco?
Yes.
They were great for about ten days.
Yes.
And now they're like, not wearing Alf garden, cause your table could have hit it.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot, I've had a lot of people.
He's, he's working on trying to repair it to get it so they can do some water on it, but.
Yeah.
Um, and he's checked with some of the construction companies, hike and others, and they don't have any, you know.
And there's no, um, mutual, uh, mutual aid or the compact that anybody can borrow them from?
Uh, I don't know if he's explored that, let me, I'll make a note, nasty about that.
And of course, after the deluge on Wednesday, I think everything was well-watered, but.
Most of those roads are gone now, Sunset Hill's gone, Hackleboro's gone, a lot of the roads got beat up, cause they were so dry that water just ripped all the way off.
So then, what does that mean about, um, having to go back and redo it?
Well, that's what's curious about the water truck, not having a water truck makes it almost ridiculous to try to maintain it right now, cause you can't pack it, you're just putting dust on dust.
Yeah. So.
Maybe we'll get like he said, we'll have one then, that people into longer, et cetera.
Yeah, what about Pool Water Company, it's the same truck, right? Does it potential to hire like a?
No, because they don't have any kind of diffuser.
They don't have a rock, yeah, okay, it's just a straight.
That's right. Yeah, you need something with a, usually there's a pipe that goes across the back and holes in it, that's, that's what they typically use.
You have a landscaping company? Not big. Not big yet?
I don't know.
What about forest fire truck? Could there be a retro pit for that one?
Well, they don't have, they don't.
Well, I guess they could because they could pump and drive. Yeah, you'd have to buy the fuse.
That would have to.
But that would be cheaper than.
That would be a viable stopgap.
Well, and the tank isn't that big on it either.
300 gallons.
It's smaller a lot.
A awful lot of filling. Yeah.
I just hate to see all the work they did.
Yeah, no, I agree. As he said, they're working on trying to get the piping fixed on it.
Yeah.
Okay. Good answer.
Police chief is on vacation, but he sent, they sent their statistics here, here. As you can see, seven incidents, three arrests, two accidents, 64 citations and 371 calls for service. They had 24 hours of training. And Officer Westgate gets certified to be a rifle instructor.
All right, we'll sign. All right, so first item for signature looks like an account's payment manifest in the amount of $66,777.60.
So who?
A second, all those in favor?
Aye. It's a very nice number.
That's what I thought.
667776.
Sorry, I, time goes.
There it is. All right, next is a payroll manifest in the amount of $51,159.33.
So who?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Cal, that's getting time for our new stamp. Cut it up? You could sabotage that statement.
Thank you.
Are you talking about damaging this whole company? Never, I would never talk about that.
All right, next item is a welfare manifest in the amount of $193.50.
So who?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next item is an interfund transfer in the amount of $1,475.48.
What's that for? When these change jobs?
Oh.
Thank you.
Uh, so who?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next is a application for property tax credit slash exemption. We've signed it already, it looks like. Is this a?
It's a renewal, so you have to initial in the, next to where you signed.
Okay.
Then you put your names again.
Okay. And this doesn't require a motion or a renewal?
No.
This just requires.
Do you, do you get notice when the renewal comes up? Or is that on the credit deed to know that? Like, does Manny send out a notice, hey, you're 10 years up? Okay.
So Cal will like a signature or a initial there in front?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be the spot.
And the date?
Uh, yes, initial and date.
Yeah.
So just as part of your name. And just make sure to sign it on the right line.
I seen that, yeah, a previous.
And then Cal needs to decide whether or not to sign it.
Oh.
Because it's your brother.
Oh, that's. Okay.
It doesn't matter.
There's two.
So I'm signing it.
Yeah, so you can review yourself.
Yeah, and I guess the fair thing to do.
All right. All right, next item is an NS 535, which is a financial report.
Hold on.
Yep.
We need initials on the signature.
Glad somebody's keeping this honest.
I was gonna say, if there were two blue stickers on it, I'd see that.
Thanks, yeah. Uh, so back to the MS 535. And this looks like a report to the state, right?
Yeah, it's a DIA form.
Yep. Anything we need to do other than sign it?
What?
Okay.
That's control. That's control that we have there. Give it a box.
Uh, we bought at the municipal safety complex. We had some hand problems.
Oh, geez.
That's correct.
They're probably reading in the filters.
Filters were so bad. So bad.
A screw. I signed, oh, my name. It's okay.
Doesn't matter.
It's okay.
And you start your name off.
Nope. Looks like Ellen from.
All right, I have.
Your brother Ellen.
Yeah.
I have a bunch of appointment slips next.
Ah.
I'll start with the first one, which is Mark Stevens to the ag permission.
Yes.
So again, it's.
I thought he was on the ad.
I think he says.
Reap, reap, what?
It's church. He desired to be here for me.
All right.
And firstly, your Mark Stevens, Joe McCullough, Damon Lee, for all reappointments. Craig Fulham is also a reappointment. But he forgot to sign his appointment slip last year. And a 30-day time period that we have to do it in, so.
Craig is on a forum ad commission?
Yes.
Yep.
Maybe all of them.
These are all.
Yeah.
And then Corinne Fulham is stepping up. She was an alternate, now she's becoming a full member. And then Katie Archer volunteered to become an alternate. So that's what those slips are. We have a bunch of renewals, a bunch of shifting around. Katie is the only person.
All right, when's their next meeting?
On the 25th. Were you on the email that Mark sent with the agenda?
No, that's why I was curious. Because they had one meeting in like April, they had it in that sense.
Yes, they're like five years.
Yeah, that's why I was curious.
We'll just keep them all down there, Cal, because there's a stack coming. All right, I just forwarded that to you.
Because I've noticed historically with the town email, if it doesn't come from the town emails, I don't get them. Like personal Gmail accounts or Hotmail accounts, I don't.
So I started, every day, I, I check the quarantine messages and release them because that's what was catching some of those things. So it wasn't very frequent, but it was just enough to cause.
Because I was gonna say, I think it's like an indirect community updates that wouldn't come through because it's Gmail.
They should be coming through now because I, I've set them as trusted centers and invited. It's, I think I fixed it.
Perfect. Is that it?
Yes.
All right, take all those back. Oops. All right, why don't we turn to our previous minutes approval next? Why don't we start with the non-public session from August the 4th? And since nobody's seen it yet, just take a minute.
Okay, I didn't see anything.
Me neither. All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If you wouldn't, pass it in.
I didn't even write it.
All right. Next, we'll turn our attention to the public meeting minutes from August the 4th. And I know that there are some corrections.
Yep. Uh, so there's a bunch of typos and grammatical changes.
Oh, and then I suddenly had a thought on line 54. Is that a maple next to the sand blank password? It's a maple, no, no, right, okay. I think I said, oh, okay, it looks like you put maple, so good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, because of how my name is, I'm counting that as.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a typo, basically. The first one that's substantial is on line 67. Adding to the public at the end of it, so it would be more visible to the public. And the next substantial one is on line 73. Inserting sentence, this is to replace the maple by the center 730. That is removed by until, just to clarify what tree we were talking about.
Yep.
Uh, the next substantial changes are line 115 and line 118. I put 1.4 million, it should have been 1.5 million.
Okay, good, good catch.
Um, the next one is line 122, inserting the sentence, the requirement to have a hundred-year plan was discontinued by DES. That way it explains why the board decided to do what they did. And then the last one is very long, so I didn't write it out on each of yours. But where on line 144, I got it crossed out. So that sentence will be replaced with, Beth asked if the gas station at exit 18 was moving forward at their CBA hearing, 12, 11, 24. I should change there to the developer, at the. Something to the effect of, the developer argued that the property hadn't been abandoned, but it continues to appear abandoned. No one present knew for sure what the state of the project is. And then it has the existing sentence, Ken plans to have Joel give him the call when he's back from vacation.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
All right, that's it.
All right. So I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes after then.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, Ken, unless you've got anything else, it looks like we're on to new business.
Yes.
Welfare job description, yes?
Uh, so there's one copy in, in there that was sent out in the email.
You're not currently having a job description for the welfare officer.
Oh, yes. Cal worked. Okay.
Currently, it's part of the administrative assistant job description. Just to be welfare officer. But if somebody else who was more qualified and had more time came along and wanted to do that, then that would be really helpful. From the job description, you can see there's a lot.
Yeah.
But it's also kind of weird because it's like, it could be nothing for months and months and months. And they could do a whole bunch of ones.
Yeah, we had talked about that. It's just, you know, where do the calls come into and have a big step first? And is it better to be in the, if that person was scheduled and in the office? So if people knew that they could call the welfare officer then? Or then you have somebody sitting there who's not doing anything and it happens.
Can you get a forwarding number? Just hypothetically, if you had a person, could they call the town office and forward to a personal cell phone? So they could gain contact?
It could.
Yes, so we could. Good thought.
Yeah, we could, if it was somebody else, we could set them up. We already have welfare at canaryandh.gov, so we just give them access to that email.
Yeah.
Give them a phone number. So. So that person wouldn't necessarily have to be, I'm also.
Obviously.
Okay. So they wouldn't necessarily have to be in the office, they would just be on call.
Yeah.
And they'd have to keep track, though.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So are you thinking hourly only? I guess questions for either. Or sort of a base salary, if you will, for?
We have a health officer that I would bet before the last two years, I would say their job frequency was about the same.
Yeah.
Last couple of years has been quite a bit different.
Yeah.
I don't know. I think, I mean, I guess at this point, unless you felt that we wanted to advertise, we'll keep it the same. It's up to you guys.
I mean, keep it the same as in polling the people that we know and.
Well, Cal wants to continue doing it or has the time to continue doing it.
Right.
You know, like you say, the last couple of years has been out of the ordinary.
Yep, it really has.
And the hard thing about this is, yeah, it would be, it would be, it seems like it would be a contained chunk of Cal would be responsible for doing that would free up a lot of your time. But also this kind of position is a lot of, you can see somebody being on their own. They're going out, they're doing house checks, they're, it, it would be really hard to keep track, actually, of what a person is doing.
Oh, you're the only inspector that does that kind of stuff too.
That would be true.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the key is hiring trustworthy. Because you have the correct person.
Yeah.
Then it wouldn't be a problem trying to be the.
Uh, because there was, there were a couple of people I was talking to through the PTO who have experience. They were wondering, because most of their experience is with child issues. But I know, you know, many of our welfare cases do have children at home, so it's not all that different. They wanted to, before they even asked around to anybody they knew, they wanted this description to see. But I think they would also, anybody would want to know if we were willing to pay for that, so.
There was, there was no, no extra budget ready for it this year. We have a budget for that position.
Yeah.
So we would have to, I think that would have to be decided on first, in the budget process.
So bring this up in September when we talk to the budget committee there.
Suggest that you're contemplating that. And then we'll go into the fall and do regular budget talks and see where we end up.
Because there's no, yeah, it'd be great. There's no way to put a, you know, see, even if you say 20 bucks an hour and there's no way to make a calculation, if the time is so erratic.
Again.
Yeah.
So we could certainly calculate strike of her time. We could certainly say, okay, well, four or five years before this, we had the average of this many hours a year. In the last two years, we've had this many hours per year.
Okay.
But I don't know, it's all those things. I, I think if we move forward, that we need to put some restrictions on certainly hours per week so that we don't run into issues with either the federal government or like what we. so that we don't run into issues with either the federal government or in terms of the state. But, you know, the salary, the hourly wage, I think is, is, that might be a difficult one.
But that's a problem with the job, though, have you put an hourly, uh, cap on the, how much time a week when, as Cal knows, some of the issues were very intense, very time focused, all at once, for a very short period of time in a week, and then nothing, so how do you?
I, I think that that is in our power to do so, and we shouldn't do it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're gonna have somebody claiming that we owe their pension, or, you know, um, health benefits, or something along those lines.
I guess it's a starting point, so if you say twenty, no more than twenty hours, and then they've got a big cake, something. They come to you and say, no, this is what I'm up against.
Right, I, um, and, and the retirement system works off, uh, you have to have thirty-five hours a week.
Right.
Um, we, oh, we use the federal guideline of thirty-two hours a week for a, for other benefits, healthcare, vacation, sick home, that. Um, and, and that is based on not just one week or two weeks. You can work fifty or sixty hours one week, and then no hours the next six months, you still wouldn't qualify for those benefits, so.
Yeah, yeah, these are not, these are vulnerable.
But it's just something that as, as we go into the budget process, we should all be aware of.
And do we, I know you came up with this, Cal, we talked about it a little bit, and I don't ever remember asking you what other towns around us do as far as welfare officers, do they? Uh, I don't really know, I know some of the larger towns have a welfare officer on staff, or they've worked with the one, the previous one in Sandburne.
Yeah.
And that was, I don't know if it was a full-time or part-time position, but she was their welfare officer.
Yeah.
Had her own office. Um, Concord obviously has a big, um, department. Um, other towns, I think, do a similar thing, where just some working on staff has that title. Um, I know that some towns, like Portsmouth, has an agreement with their neighboring towns, um, mutually kind of thing, so Portsmouth does all the, um, administrative stuff, and then the neighboring towns, like pay them. I contacted Concord, and Concord is mainly not interested. Um, so.
Interesting.
That's not really an option for us.
Yeah.
But I'd say I'm.
Uh, I would not, simply because of the issues Sandburne has had the last, with their last two welfare directors.
Hmm, okay.
And that emphasizes the need to have a very trustworthy person.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, so we put this on the agenda for September, and the budgeting committee can think about it a little bit more?
I, I think as far as pay and everything like that, yeah, like I say, it's, we don't have a budget for it, even if we wanted to hire somebody today. So, by now, it's still gonna fall back on the staff position.
Um, should I wait then to share this with the people I talked to about seeing if they knew anybody?
I would think so.
Okay.
Okay.
I think technically, we really shouldn't do any of that.
Okay.
This is a very complete, um, description that I'm not sure we will.
That's what, we just want to make sure we have a job description, so. It's a great idea. Do end up going down that road, the housing.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is very complete, and I think probably a lot more than most people would think the job would entail.
Yeah. And I would expect from any budget committee, a spirited discussion and preach a job, so.
Yeah.
May or may not move forward.
Well, thank you for doing it up until now, Cal, and we'll, hopefully we can find somebody who might be willing to do it too.
Yeah.
It's a biggie.
All right.
Do you want to add the description?
I've got it.
Oh, no, I didn't, I think you all.
Oh, okay.
What this?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. All right.
Uh, we do have some other new business.
Okay.
Um. Uh, uh, DES, Solid Waste Management Bureau, um, work with legislature, and as required by Health Guild Two, decided January first, two thousand twenty-six, customers who dispose of solid waste that have permitted New Hampshire Solid Waste Landfill, Wasteful Energy Facility, will consider it required to pay a disposal surcharge of three dollars and fifty cents a ton. Uh, as customers, municipalities, solid waste Texas will be required to pay these surcharges. Municipalities will then be able to request quarterly reimbursement of these surcharge payments upon submission of invoices and proof of payment. DES is currently drafting a new statement. So, we are currently paying ninety-five dollars a ton.
Mm-hmm.
That is slated to go up to a hundred dollars a ton in January, which will make it a hundred and three dollars and fifty cents a ton. Um, so far this year, I think I did the math, we would have paid an extra eight hundred and sixty-something dollars. Um, so it's kind of out to twelve, thirteen hundred dollars a year, if we continue our average. Um, but we would get that one back as long as we submit an invoice, you know? Um, and this was an answer to the, um, the push from municipalities and other places about public state trash coming into the state.
That's what prompted it?
Yes.
Huh?
They, this, they cannot, the state cannot, uh, cannot prohibit it trash from coming in from our state, because it would be a violation of Federal Commerce Commission.
Hmm.
Uh, it's, it's, it's a product that is shipped, and the state can't refuse to take it.
Huh.
So it's a part of the federal trade.
Interesting.
Um, so, you know, the, the big question is, we have a couple of big landfills in the state. And a lot of, and the, sorry, but a lot of the landfills are filling up. And once they're full, once they're capacity, they have to be capped, and they can all only be used, so you have to open a new one somewhere. And as, I think everybody's seen in the news, though, wants to have another landfill, open up a big commercial landfill, open up in there, not over nearby. So, the question is, how do you prevent more of state trash coming in and leave space for in-state trash?
Yeah.
And this is one of the ways they, um, try and help that.
Hmm. Very interesting.
Uh, let's see. The only other new business I have is the P and L, you got copies of this budget?
No.
Um, a couple of things I just wanted to point out.
Yes.
On page four, um, under ZDA. Uh, if you add, add the expenses up, they total so far year-to-date for ZDA, which, uh, secretary wages, postage, appetizers, supply seminars, totals up to twenty-eight thirty-six point twenty-six. They have got, they have received, uh, one thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars in income. So I'll just kind of let you know that, um.
Wait, I'm sorry, where are we at again, on page four of the ZDA?
On the ZDA.
Yeah.
If you add up the total expenses.
So that'd be line four-one-nine-one-one-one, and all those?
Yep.
Yeah.
Eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Yeah.
It totals to two thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-six cents.
Okay.
We go back to page one, and the ZDA fees, fees, you see they have, these, received one thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars in fees. So they couldn't have their costs.
Yeah.
Um, on page five, one of the big expenses that we've seen, an old ridge, and I think, I think we've talked about this before, but I just wanted to continue on, uh, because it's gonna impact something else later on, on the new business, uh, and the old business is municipal building maintenance.
Yeah, I know at least that.
Uh, where eight thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars over budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. And what is, um, parts and supplies, which is a rather astonishing number there at the end?
Where?
Line four-one-nine-five-point-five. Under cemeteries, parts and.
Oh, cemeteries, um.
Is that the new, um, the work on?
So you can see, it's, it's only seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars over budget.
Yeah.
Cemeteries is giant.
Yeah, okay.
But they're only seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars over. But if you go down to the bottom line, they still have ninety-seven hundred dollars left.
Right.
So, parts and supplies, I think, uh, you can see they only budgeted a dollar.
Okay.
They spent seven hundred and eighty-nine, and I'm not sure exactly what those are, I'd have to get the breakdown, but, yeah, but, um.
And that's, you know, I've been, um, seeing time up there, so we bought the piece of property that goes across the back.
Yes.
And it looks like there's a new entrance road that's going in there, and there are two granite posts, they weren't always there, were they?
I don't know.
Okay. It was like two new posts were set, so I was wondering, and you get with that?
Maybe, that may be what the cost was, and I'm not sure.
Okay.
Um, let's see. That, uh, page nine, solid waste disposal. Uh, solid waste collection, solid waste disposal, the total, you can see what the total is on the solid waste is eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. Again, if you go to, uh, page two, under enterprise fund, we have received sixty-one thousand sixty-four dollars and forty-nine cents. So we're really doing pretty good on that, on that one.
Hmm.
Think that was all I had.
There was, um.
Building inspection on page six, we've expended eight thousand nine hundred and nine dollars, we've taken in seven thousand two hundred and fifty-two. Right, so.
And are we still kind of where we thought we were going to be with legal expenses for, like the planning board?
So, as you can see, we're over on legal expenses with the planning board. Um, we're, we're over double, we had budgeted a thousand, we've already spent two thousand five hundred and eighty-five, so we're almost sixteen hundred dollars over. I don't know, uh, the project, the hold fire project is still, still there. I'm not sure who knows what the, what, what is.
Well, and they, and they don't know yet if any of those legal funds can be recouped from, probably, okay?
But overall, the budget is looking pretty good.
That's what's good here.
We have, we have some old bridges, we have some where we've, we haven't spent a lot of money, so overall, we're in pretty good shape. And I will have, uh, a better breakdown of everything for our meeting with the budget for September.
Yeah.
Thank you. See you soon.
Yeah.
Do we have to, no, that'll just be the adjustment, that whole thing with the change in cost for tonnage, that'll get.
So we will have to take that into account when we're looking at the budget for next year, because we have the budget to pay that much out.
Regardless of what we get back.
Correct, the, the money that we get back will just go back to the general fund. But we'll have to budget that for the tonnage that we have to spend.
And then where does the whole in and out with shaver and, where does that figure in? It just in there, in the calculation somewhere, or separately?
I haven't gotten that information yet.
Okay.
All right, so we have a private contractor in town that, that, uh, hauls to the traction energy plant, and their tonnage goes towards our town's tonnage. Town is required to supply so many tons a year to wind waste, which is the facility now. Uh, and that, any, any tonnage that the private hauler hauls from Canterbury goes towards that tonnage. And they pay the same rate that we do, but we charge them a ten percent administrative fee. So I don't know, I'm not sure where that tonnage is, where the surcharge is gonna go on that. Is it gonna be built to the town of Canterbury? I'm not sure, I have to look into it.
That's, that's gonna be the, for keeping exercise.
Yes, that's what we do.
Will areas keep these numbers in mind when they're running their projections for next year?
I, I, I forwarded this email to George, so it takes that into consideration.
I'd just be curious to see how it affects the, the subcontractors or the proposal, that the seller knows what they do, how it affects their.
Yeah.
All right, um, before, do we have a town moderator?
We do have.
Right?
Name's, name's still, okay.
The supervisor checklist that are, have, uh, contacted several people.
Yeah.
Um, they're still working on trying to find somebody that is willing to go in, hopefully running in, uh, when.
When the position becomes vacant.
That's the plan, I think. I think they could probably find somebody to fill in for now.
Yeah.
But I think they're trying to find somebody that they can recruit to.
Bring it out, who's on you on?
Yeah.
All right, I just was curious about that. Anything else on new business?
No.
All right, so around the old business, land acknowledgement.
That's the one.
So, I forwarded the email from Evan, there's a copy of it in the old business folder.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I think this was the, uh, response to us kind of asking for more information.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I had an interesting conversation with the, uh, I wanna say, woman family, uh, husband and wife who were here at Canterbury Fair, about.
Okay.
Um, and I don't know, has Evan had talked with them?
Yeah.
Um, she didn't remember off the top of her head, but he might have. But, um, you know, again, I was, I was like, you know, I'm, I'm not necessarily willing to just go out and sign something when I, I don't know what we're committing the town to. And, um, you know, what she said is basically, it's a, it's kind of a granting, um, the stewardship of the land since they can't be stewards of it anymore, to the people who are here now. So it's just an acknowledgement there of taking care of the land we're sitting on. Um, there's a lot more that can be done, but I think that's the basis of it. That by displaying these, that that's what you're acknowledging. You know, that these people were here before, and they're not, um, responsible at this time. That's how I understood our conversation there, so. Um, I think this is back still to, uh, part of the presentation you made to the tricentennial committee, that as part of the tricentennial, you want to, you know, have this, you know, whatever signed, do whatever, um, formal acknowledgement, uh, done up and, um, displayed at that time. Is that what you understood from me?
I agree, yes, yeah.
Have, have we spoken to any of the other committees, or any of the other committees? Have, have we spoken to any of the other committees or have any of the other committees heard of any? I'm just being curious to see what conservation or HDC input, what, what they would have or what their view on it would be.
I don't know the answer to that, actually.
I know this hasn't come up to in conservation.
No. I'm just curious, like maybe they would have an idea if we display a plaque or a notice, if they have any view or vision on it, or they might just say, why are you doing this? You know, I don't know. I'm just curious to see, other than the people in this room, what their views or takes on it are. My, my, you know, ten thousand foot view is, it seems like a harmless good gesture. It doesn't seem like it's going to do anything or imply anything, but I'd be curious to what other people in town committees, you know, thought about it. Either the spaces that it would, I wouldn't say affect, but the space that would be present.
Um, actually, the conservation commission gave us people the, next time I go to a meeting, just bring it and say, what do you think?
Yeah.
Who else would add a commission?
I just, when HDC has all the rules and regulations for town space, they might be one that.
Well, HDC, yeah, and conservation.
Conservation throughout the alley of the land acknowledgement, in my mind.
All right, why don't we ask them and? Um, this was something that he actually forwarded back, you know, this was back in May, so it's been sitting a while. So if we, um, if we bring this before those two committees at our next meetings, so that'll be another month in there.
Actually, on Wednesday.
Oh, your Wednesday? I just had, I just had that. Okay. And I'll do it done next time, conservation.
Okay. All right, so I think for now, we'll, we'll play with this pending reports from, from the other committees.
Okay.
All right.
Ooh, it's back at the fire station.
And you can, I think we sort of discussed that.
We did. Um, the repair was made to stop the leak. However, the company that did the repair, um, feels that it should do some work there to have a, a drain pan under the whole unit instead of just under one portion of it. In case there was someone leak somewhere and, um, the one that's there now does not have a sensor that shuts it off if it senses water in it. So you'd like to have one of those. Uh, the total is.
It used to have one, right? And then.
It, there was one there and apparently it was disconnected at some point or not wired incorrectly.
Yeah.
Uh, the technician I spoke to was, um, said they didn't think we worked on it, they were doing a job.
Oh, so it would be a good thing to have.
He, they can do the work for another eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy cents. Now we'll put a pan underneath the whole thing. So twelve gauge, five eighths pan by ten P. They hang, they do, right now it's resting on ductwork, so they hang it from hangers. They put a water sensor kit in and then the condensate pump. Problem was the condensate pump had quit working and the water sensor had not, had been disabled. So it kept creating condensate and that was dripping through the ceiling.
Oh, which is.
Uh, they replaced the condensate pump. And they used one that was actually made for that. Fortunately, this goes back to the quality of work, but it's one of the building was good. But anyway, they want another eight hundred and thirty-three dollars to fix it correctly. So as I pointed out in our last conversation about the budget, we're eight thousand dollars over on that line already.
Yeah.
That's what it looks.
And not doing it is, you know, does that leave us open to more leaks and more water and more damage and more?
Potentially.
I mean, eight hundred dollars seems like this point a little bit to keep a much bigger problem.
And that, that would be my recommendation. I, I think we need to do it. It's one of those things where, I mean, the other costs have been, things that we couldn't completely happen in. You know, water stock and equipment on us and some other things that happened, so. Like.
It's odd that that's all.
It's a building that's twenty plus years old and again, the quality of the work that was done, uh, we're, we're now paying for it, I think.
I think for eight hundred bucks, you're better off fixing it right now than trying to prevent it maintenance versus.
Disaster maintenance. Yeah, no, I would agree. Is it not, well, it doesn't really matter, it's a bigger conversation. I never would have thought about all that air conditioning up in the ceiling where you can't see it or access it.
Very common.
Yeah.
Yeah, when, when the building was first moved into, there's a closet in the chain room. That closet, we had to put a garbage can in because the condensate pump was never connected to anything. So the water was just, we had to empty the garbage can every week or whenever it was.
All right, do you need a motion on that or?
No, no, I just want.
Motion agreement.
I, I was gonna just go pay it, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention, only because of the sole fire alarm.
Yes, but that's, that's money that's good to spend.
Right.
All right, uh.
Any other reports?
Yeah. Anybody want to leave off?
Well, can I just pull business real quick?
Okay, sure.
This is probably count with the roads. Your schedule's probably more complex than mine. Can we schedule a time to go both sit down and maybe give me some stuff? Try to spearhead that before budget season starts.
Um, thinking for the, uh.
Just continue.
Yeah, before we start getting more in our season and everything else, if I could, you know, September is going to be probably my most flexible time before school starts in life.
Right.
So I could definitely take some days if I have to come into town office and make that work. So whatever works for your schedule, I just want to get that out, open.
Yeah.
Putting little stars on it.
Little stars.
Put googly eyes on it.
Right. All right, so I've been representing.
Go for it.
All right, I'll start off with, I think, I think we're all up on the latest with Meridian Development Planning Board. You may have some additional information actually, but I'll let you.
I do. Yeah.
The, um, I think since we discussed it here last, we had the walkthrough of the site. Um, there were a number of members of the public that were at that planning board meeting. And, um, a few that spoke. There are a couple that spoke via Zoom or whatever our, um, services. Um, and I, I guess that continues. That's really, we okayed a minor subdivision, um, for, um, Rick Sullivan and his wife and their neighbor. And I'm not sure that will be moving forward, but it's, but. Thanks, I don't know what's called it.
Well, I'm not exactly sure that they want to move forward with it.
Exactly.
But they want to know that they can.
But they have the option.
Yeah.
Is there a total amount of hearings they can keep pushing eighteen? Cause I know they've moved, they've pushed that one three times now, two or three times they've moved the hearing.
So there are.
Continue it.
Continue, that's a, yeah, how many times can they continue it before a decision has to be ready?
They've got questions to be answered though.
Right.
What do you mean, can we kick a can so many times?
No, at least my understanding is if, if there are substantial questions that can be answered.
So there's no time limits or parameters on it that, I'm just looking at the other side, is if they think we're stalling or we're not working on it or any?
And I certainly don't think anyone's stalling at this point.
Okay.
I think they're really working to get answers and make it, and not get work. That's what it feels like in.
I agree. I just, I didn't know if there was, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good question though, yeah.
Well, there are certainly, but certainly there's a problem. You can't just get an application and ignore it.
Right.
But, but I don't think that, you know.
Okay.
We're in that, that situation.
And did, and what about chapter nine? You're just waiting on?
Correct, oh yeah, thank you for reminding me of that. So chapter nine of the, um, ten year plan, we voted, uh, to table pending the areas engineering report. So that's the solid waste chapter and since we are hopefully soon going to be getting the areas engineering report. I think that it's important that we incorporate the latest information into that, that report.
Additional news or?
ADUs, correct. Um, so, uh, we, um, talked about the, um, new state regulations regarding, um, ADUs and the, um, application that was, um, pending before the planning board for, um, an ADU on Chica Road, um, was, and I assume they've been in, put back to the town for issuance on the building. So, um, I think, I think we're all clear now on, on the, um, role and place that the planning board plays in the process and there may still be a few ADU applications that do come before the planning board. But the vast majority of them will just go to the town and get a permit, they're, they're by right now, so.
And whatever, whatever that means. I mean, not whatever that means, I mean, I think the, the question is still, um, and that went before the planning board is, how are they counted? Are ADUs should be part of our building cap or not? And that, they need to figure that out because it's a question you have.
There was a question posed to the planning board and I think there was a couple members had one opinion and correct or there was some other. They were going to get back to us.
Right.
I, I asked.
No, there wasn't, there wasn't a decision, but I think it's.
I asked a direction for the rolling section.
Yeah.
There is a decision that needs to be made because, um, it's going to come up in a couple places, I think.
Yes, it will.
A lot of relation impact too. I mean, maybe you could have one person or three people, four people, you know? So it does have bigger impacts in terms of.
That's on every building cap too, so you know what you're doing with it, so. It's, I think it should count in there, but, um, we'll see what, how they come down in that.
I guess the, you know, without getting too deep into it, the potential is if you get to your cap and I by right want to put an easy on my property.
Who's, who's on first? Who's, yeah, I know, that's a big thing. And I think a lot of towns are going to ask that, so.
I think you're absolutely right.
Well, let's see.
Yeah. Um, all right, that's my report.
Okay, I'll go into conservation commission first because that was where on, um, Thursday the fourteenth, which was this past Thursday, Meridian came into the conservation commission, they were asked to attend. Um, the commission, as usual, had a lot of good questions. Uh, they got a lot of, um, definition from, um, Meridian about how they saw things. Like, uh, they were mostly concerned about the open space. That was what, um, the conservation commission was weighing in on. Where was the pump house going to be? Um, what was it going to be? Is it how big? What was the road to the pump house going to be? I mean, there was some confusion about whether it was going to be like a big road and then it's in the open space and then the conservation commission looked like they don't want that. But, um, apparently, um, when Meridian went over their calculations, they actually had a little extra allowance, shall we say, for the open space. So they ended up taking out the road to the pump house and like the pump house, and they still had plenty to offset for the residential. Um, and they're going to just do a gravel road. The commission was happy. So they asked good questions, Meridian had good answers. Um, the commission on the whole seemed okay with the project. Um, and they made several suggestions that Meridian was willing to, um, deal with, like, um, uh, putting a fence, um, uh, the conservation commission wanted to put a fence to clearly delineate the residential section from the open space that shouldn't be touched upon. We can do a nice split rail fence, it'll look lovely, it'll serve the purpose fine. So they, um, and their suggestions will be presented at the next planning board meeting, um, on the twenty-sixth. Um, one of the questions I did ask, because I was at that meeting, um, because they were talking a lot about, um, they have wetland scientists on the board. Uh, how much water is there in the, in the well? Um, will it be enough to take care of any future business needs as well as the residents? And I asked about cisterns for fire suppression. And they, what they did was they rearranged and you'll see at the next planning board meeting, they did change the plan to take those two units that are right looking down the open space, they took them out. They moved them over onto that piece of open space that was not contiguous. So now that's at, and the calculation changed. But now you don't have to worry about crossing the road to get to the open space because there'll be two, two units on it. And then, uh, they had one of the, um, stormwater collection ponds in the space where the two houses were, that opens up the view. They didn't have to do so much grading for the road, which the conservation people were very happy about. Um, and there is a little section of land as you come in. Uh, the bulk of the residences are on your left and on the right, there was a space that they said could be used for a cistern. They did say it would be used for a cistern, but there's room for it.
Yeah.
So that was, that was good. Um, the, uh, conservation commission also continued discussion on the draft of the new contaminated materials ordinance. Um, they added a lot to it, um, based on what other cities around have included. A lot of discussion about whether certain materials should be in there or not, but that, that's ongoing and they're going to do a draft and, and send it along. Um, they did updates on several projects, installation of the new bench at Skudak. Um, re-blazing a trail, footbridges at Kimball Pond, and rock removal at, um, Bob Fife Field. And they reviewed their bylaws. But they did have two questions while I'm thinking that they wanted to know if some sort of barrier could be put up down by Kimball Pond by where the, where the dam, where the beaker de sever is and where the water outflow is. Because they've noticed that some trucks have been driving in on the dam. And they really don't think that's a good idea, that trucks driving on the earth and dam. So they want to know if something can be put there to prevent vehicles from driving across. And they were kind of at a loss at what that something might be. Either a big rock.
A couple of logs.
Yeah, well.
Just buried a bunch.
It is. They, they actually ended up not burying, that's a, that's next on my, that's next on my list. So I think they may be in to ask what the town's position is on what they can do with block that's a truck still driving on the dam.
Well, it wouldn't interfere with fire. It wouldn't interfere with pumping or turning around the cable, right?
That's what they were worried about, and mowing.
Then one time there was a cable saw across there.
Yeah.
With a padlock on it, but that's gone. I don't know what happened to that, I'm not sure.
They probably just drove right through it.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know.
Do you want them to come in and talk about?
I think that would be the best is.
I'll have a make-up proposition when they go down there.
Yeah, cause I'm just thinking. Yes, the fire department needs it.
Yeah, and typically, it, it, it can be utilized for a pump site. Uh, it's not the best because it's so high.
Yeah.
And it's, but, but it could be.
Yeah.
But wouldn't they pull in by where the stone bench is before they ever get to the? Well, they're going to be down there anyway, building.
It, it might be good to have maybe a conversation with the fire department and see what they think. And then talk to the town, the highway department, maybe.
If you expanded the parking down there, would people be less apt to? Cause if they're doing out there, if you're fishing one night, there's two cars in there, you've got no place to go. You know, it might not be.
But you don't have to drive across the dam to get away from it.
Well, I'd say, but it is.
Oh, well.
You know, but I mean, like sometimes you gotta turn around and maybe incidentally you back over it because you're not paying attention. What if they expanded parking without help remedies? People try to drive over it.
I don't know, I'll ask them.
That'd be a good question for them.
You know, promote use of the space.
I guess they, I think probably to start with, their conversation would go with the fire department and see what they think and then go from there as far as some kind of areas.
Okay. Um, there are two big brush piles in, um, in the field as well and they didn't know if it's possible. They just thought they would ask if that's something that the highway department could take at their leisure.
Depends on where they are.
They're reachable.
They, they have done that fast.
That's what they thought. And they, they were very appreciative of, um, the department taking care of the brush piles down at the riverland. So they just, they didn't know how they'd act. Is, is my coming here and asking you sufficient or?
I can certainly ask John.
If you could ask John, that would be great. And that was that for today. The, um, energy committee is going to be holding a panel discussion on September ninth on how-tos of EV ownership. Um, the next day, uh, September tenth, they're going to be having their electric car petting zoo, which I'm assuming Ruth Eath has been in touch with as far as it being okay for them to do this in the center and park on the, they've done it before, on the lawn by the cemetery. And they're also going to be having, um, like, uh, snow blowers and chainsaws and other electric, um, vehicles, type vehicles and tools around the gazebo. like, uh, snow blowers and chainsaws and other electric, um, vehicles, type vehicles and tools around the gazebo. What they did ask, and I don't know how you want this request to come, um, they wanted to have help with pedestrian crossing because the farmer's market is going on at the same time, and the cars are across the way, and there're gonna be people going back and forth.
We told them to do that in the.
Cause, oh, they have to, you told them that they have to take care of it?
Was it Beth McGwin that?
Yeah.
Yeah, Beth McGwin emailed us and asked, um, and we just, uh, gave a heads up to the PD that that would be happening, and suggested that Energy Committee should have somebody there to just put a little vest on.
Okay.
And, and put, they can ask the highway department to drop off a couple of cones, and put some cones in the road there. Um, what if you do it for village? That's, that's, people see cones, they slow down.
Yeah.
Okay.
They don't slow down with blue lights or red lights or anything like that, but they slow down with cones.
Okay. To, they will put a couple, put a couple of cones by the dam and just, there you go, uh, to, to take care of it. Okay, they didn't seem to remember that, okay. Uh, I will pass that message along. Um, Jeff Beltrama took the information and the invite from John Norberg of World Energy, um, and he's gonna contact them to see exactly what their free energy evaluation includes up at the, um, municipal center. Uh, two members are gonna be attending the, uh, September twenty fifth All Day Local Energy Systems Conference. Um, and just so you know, Cal, I don't know if you saw my email, I, I emailed this all to you, okay? Um, uh, a committee member's going to reach out also to, uh, Representative Clean Energy New Hampshire, um, to weigh in how they might craft, help us craft policy to help with town energy issues. Um, and ask for advice, this was a good one, they wanna ask for advice on how energy committees can actually complete RFPs so they can actually get projects done and approved. So they're gonna try and figure out for future projects. Um, there's a new model solar zoning ordinance that's been released from Soul Smart and Clean Energy, and Beth McGwin is gonna be working with Josh Gordon, uh, from the planning board to present it to the town at a future date. They seem to, she seemed to think it was really good, uh, zoning ordinance, but they're gonna see how it, how it jives with our table of uses.
Yeah.
Um, they're also looking into possibly setting up some sort of roundtable or listserv of energy committees from other towns to share information, and they're still organizing Window Dressers event, um, in November. So this committee's actually got a lot on their plate at the moment, which is, which is great. Um, Community Power, Edgar is our representative. Um, weigh in if I don't get this right, um, so, um, there should be an update, um, Edgar's gonna be working with Andrew Hatch, who's the outreach manager of Community Power Commission New Hampshire, um, and trying to figure out what needs to be actually done to get that money from our adder fund transferred into the town account. Um, the sticky part of it is that at the last count, the fund was about fifty-two hundred bucks, but some money might be withheld if people in town haven't paid their bills, and we're not exactly sure how that works. So Edgar will be talking with Andrew Hatch to try and figure out to see how we make that work. Um, Beth McGwin is going to be participating, she participated in a program with, uh, three universities, Unitil and CPC and H. Uh, they're gonna be installing equipment to monitor energy usage at her home and whoever else volunteers, uh, and see exactly how and when electricity is used. Um, and the goal is to, uh, come up with an energy program or some sort of sensors that could reduce consumption during peak energy events. So, um, for anybody listening, um, Canterbury residents can participate, anybody can participate. You need the, the next, the deadline actually isn't a day or two, it was just really tight. Um, I've got the link to the questionnaire, Beth McGwin has the link to the questionnaire. You fill it out, it's like, takes you like four minutes to fill out the questionnaire. You send it off, and then they say whether you're the kind of energy user that they want in the study. Um, they come out, an election comes out, they put all the sensors on your, uh, circuit boards, they measure this, that, the other thing. You get to keep the equipment after they're done, and then they're going to use all the information for their study. So, uh, again, if you're listening, and I'll see if I can get this out, uh, who wants to be part of this study, it's Unitil customers only. Um, and then, um, we did discuss the current mission of Canterbury Community Power because it's really different from when the committee was formed. Um, first of all, there's a lot fewer members at the moment, and the main push of the committee to begin with was setting up, getting to be part of Community Power, getting the town to approve it, to vote, to get in, um, and figure out what we needed to do, but that's, at the moment, the, the bulk of the committee is, you know, Edgar and Beth interacting with CPC and H, uh, figuring out what the new rates will be, and trying to see which of their programs like this one with the sensors might be, um, applicable for the town. So it's, it's gotten to be pretty focused on us, you know, going with, uh, Community Power New Hampshire, and information coming back at the moment, that's all the bandwidth the committee has, and how we get the information out about what Community Power is, and how to opt in, about what your choices are to the residents of town, particularly new residents. So, um, Tim Nee is looking at what's written on the town website about what the mission is, and we're reworking that to make sure it's now current. And I did present the, um, information about cell phone coverage to both the Energy Committee and CP, uh, CNH, and they're just, everybody thinks it's a good idea to pursue what there is in the bandwidth or anybody who's willing to take it up at the moment. Fred is really, um, Fred Portway very willing to help if we need him to do a thing, but he's not willing to be the spearhead for this. So I guess my question at the end of the meeting was, um, you got this, um, Northampton, is it okay if I call Northampton and say, what did this company do? If you get, just get more information from them, cause no one, as a select board member, I think if I can call their, whoever in their town dealt with this, um, the company, to see what the, what everybody was concerned about that the company that Northampton used, it sounds like they were pretty much, um, helping with permitting for towers, and not necessarily any other ideas of how to do anything with the abuse, uh, coverage, but they didn't know. So if I have, it's okay for me to call Northampton, I'll find out what package is going on. And that was it for the Community Power. Um, again, it's mostly messaging about how people can interact in their, you know, and make their choices for their bill, and bringing information back from the mothership to, uh, to Canterbury. And I think that's it.
Top act to follow.
Go ahead.
HTC, we met last month, uh, they approved a solar, a rooftop solar array on, uh, Gaimings Bar.
Oh.
That was the only major movement shaking over there. Uh, they discussed potential project coming from Shakil Village for any windows, which I believe was brought up with us during her second year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
Uh, so that was pretty straightforward, they meet again this week, so we'll have some new stuff, in which I'll bring up the sign with him. Um, that's there. Rep Committee just closed soccer.
What do you mean, the sign?
The, the potential for having like an information sign, we talked about it.
Oh, okay.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah, and, and Edgar has brought that up several times too, about it, it's information sign as particularly for, well, in our case, it was for how to get information out about rates or choices or anything, but any other sort of town information. I think we have a, a lot more to discuss about that.
I think it can be beneficial, but I think, I don't know if it has to go through the HTC first, but if we're gonna have it down here, I think we need their input on size, and then we can kind of.
Well, and there's. And that's what, and what I was saying to Edgar the other night is, the problems are multiple, you know, either somebody's gotta sit out there and change the letters, who is that somebody? Who decides what information goes on? You need a warm body, which seem to be insurance apply. I volunteered Edgar.
It's a big commitment.
But it is a big commitment, and then, um, you know, uh, it isn't a digital sign, which is, you know, I think everybody would freak out about.
Agreed.
Uh, and would be expensive, quite frankly, if you're gonna try and run power to it. Um, is it only in one place, what is that place? If it's in the center, everybody on the other side isn't going to see it. You know, do we make better use?
It's gotta be neon, of course.
Hmm.
But we have to make better use of getting.
Yeah.
Arrows and flash.
Yeah.
No, I'll bring it up with Kevin, because I, I mean, I, I briefly looked at, they're relatively affordable if you get the ones who change the, the letters on yourself. Pretty straightforward, they're not breaking the bank, expensive, but I have a talk to him to see design and placement sort of stuff. Uh, that's it tomorrow's meeting.
Do you want any of the, uh, markups I did the last time this idea came up?
Yeah, you have, I can grab them for you, and then, uh.
I can electronically send them to you.
Is that? The Rep Committee, they closed soccer registrations yesterday, or reached out to Randy today, she had the numbers in front of her, but she said it's another good year for soccer. Um, they are now in the planning phases of Halloween, which she's already chomping at the bit for, so they're looking forward to that. And then after Halloween is done, all focus will be shifted to the Christmas tree, and what festivities they're gonna do there, and whether it's going to be in conjunction with, um, Friends and Canterbury Center, and how they wanna work that out. Uh, School Board was this week, a lot of policy changes at the School Board level, nothing directly impacting the town at this point. Um, enrollment is up, I got the kindergarten numbers, I think they got twenty-nine enrolled right now solely in Canterbury, so that's about six more than last year's enrollment, so they're definitely coming up there. Uh, I brought up briefly, um, the traffic issue with pickup and drop off.
Yep.
Um, so they're gonna try to address that, and they brought up with me, or I should say Principal Chubb, had a question regarding, when you come off the hill, the, the school zone sign with the speed limit is right at the entrance, it's kinda like bent in half. She wasn't sure if that was a town issue or a state deal, it's, it's like, you know, just your typical T post, but it's kinda over. And she wasn't sure if the town or the state maintained that since it's on the state.
Well, it's state, well, state's hard with the school state.
That's what I told her, but I didn't know who had the ability to straighten the T post.
I didn't even notice.
Yeah, it's a little curvy.
The sidewalk is gonna be repaved.
Okay.
In September. Um, I don't know if that will affect that in line.
No, the sidewalk doesn't care, if the sidewalk comes up, they got at the entrance, it's just past the entrance. So, um, you know.
So I, I would suggest that she call the state.
Okay. Bring that up, I'll, I'll. And then, let's see. And then I'm going to forward over, um, like a map of the, the parking pickup drop off to Superintendent Tursey, and they're gonna kind of build their minds together to see what they can do. I spoke with Principal Chubb after the meeting, uh, and just sort of brought up the issues and the complaints that people have had and ways to remedy it. Essentially, they're seeing it too, but I think a lot of these have been in conjunction with the lack of reliable transportation, more parents are picking up and dropping off if their own kids on the bus. So they're gonna try to figure it out, but they can only do so much.
Well, for a while, they, we had, they used to have everybody wait in the center, and then there was a, we had a police presence in the morning when they could to.
The issue is, I know you don't have kids in the school right now, but you put, Edgar can probably speak to this too.
Yeah.
You pull up, it's one line.
Yeah.
And two kids get in a vehicle at a time, and if I wanna get out and hug and squish my kid and wash his face and buckle him up, time adds up.
Yeah.
So, so what I proposed to her was splitting the lanes, if you need to get out and buckle your little one in, pull in the right, park, get out of your vehicle, for the drive-bys, you throw the kids in and get them out, and then when the car is ready to pull forward, you stop it and let them pull up. You gotta do something, it's about ten minutes where if you're driving, you probably know coming up or down that hill.
Yeah.
Very tight.
It's wicked slippery, you can't accelerate or stop, and unfortunately, more kids in the school, more kids getting picked up and dropped off, they have to sort of find a remedy or try something, especially in brain days. Everybody stops at the gym door because they don't let the kids out fifty yards ahead to walk inside, so the traffic gets backed up. So, you know, we just gotta figure something out for safety issues more than anything else. So I told her we would send it, I'd send a map over to Michael with just a proposed breakdown and see what they've done. But, um, I did bring up, uh, three-phase power, told them, you haven't heard any numbers yet, they didn't seem neither receptive nor non-accepted, it was just sort of there, so no update on there end for the, that stuff either. Um, but that's it.
What would the school need three-phase power for anyway?
Oh, great, HVAC.
Oh, really?
Their HVAC system is really, really bad, and I believe they did not get the grant to move forward with that now, so they're gonna have to start incorporating it in the long-term budget. And I think Canterbury is one of the priority schools, Canterbury Elementary, Belmont Elementary, cause they're the older schools.
Yeah.
So include all the air handlers, have to get essentially ripped out and upgraded, along with all the power to and from them for bigger pumps, condensers, the whole night.
Okay.
So they did try for grants, I know there's still a couple grants out there potentially, but I haven't heard any update on those.
Good.
So. That's it.
That's enough, that's a lot.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
This is, this is good, I really like hearing what the other committees are doing.
I agree, yeah.
And I think it's good to keep us all on the same.
For awareness, certainly. All right, um, we need to go, if nobody's got anything else, it looks like we need to go back into a non-public session, okay?
Wait, do we, are these two things on the, oh, these two are the two topics for the non-public session, okay.
All right.
I have, uh, did I do good Edgar?
I had it marked out.
Okay. The two, and they're, they're not the usual.
All right, one at a time or both together?
Both together.
All right, so I am going to make a motion that we adjourn to executive session per RSA ninety-one A colon three two B and RSA ninety-one A three two N.